Calling me in order, can we do a roll call, please?
Regent Carter. Regent Carter, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. Regent Carvalho.
Here.
Regent Del Carlo. Regent Dubrava. Vice Chair Geddes.
Here.
Regent Hayes.
Here.
Regent Lieberman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Moran.
Yes.
Chair Page.
Here.
Regent Perkins.
Here.
Regent Trechak.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Regent McMichael.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And also I'd like to have a moment of silence for Santita Guduchi, Regent Del Carlo's sister, and my mother-in-law Patty Tober. Okay, thank you. With that, we're gonna go to item number one, public comment in Elko.
There's no public comment from Elko?
Thank you. Public comment in Reno.
There is.
Okay. If you could please state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Good morning, Kent Urban, E R V I N, for the Nevada Faculty Alliance. We work to empower faculty to be fully engaged in our mission of helping students succeed. Part of faculty empowerment is a comprehensive compensation system that rewards excellence in teaching and research. With the demise of the merit pay system since 2009, that is sad but lacking. Even recent cost of living adjustments have not kept up with inflation, which is running at 3.1% for this fiscal year over the prior year using CPI urban less. Now we have a situation where the state has promised a 3% COLA for one year only, but has failed to fully fund it. All ENSI faculty and classified staff should receive the full 3% COLA on July 1 as promised by the governor and mandated by the legislature and Governor in A B 542. The state must make good on the missing 6.4 million in funding based on the 80% in the legislatively approved budgets. At the appropriate time, the regents should formally request the fact funding from the governor and the Interfinance Committee. We do not believe the institutions should be forced to make up the shortfall, nor should students. The funds need to be found from budget or reserves that do not harm instructional or faculty's instructional programs or faculty searches. Increases in student fees should be only a last resort, but it needs to be made clear to the decision-makers in Carson City that that is where institutional signs come from. The cost of the shortfall should be distributed fairly among institutional and program budgets according to the state funding. Finally, we find it distressing that the reason for the underfunding has not been explained. There was no discussion of policy change during the legislative budget process. With a vote on the constitutional status of ENSI coming in 2020, it is especially important that there be a full discussion of where ENSI is headed as a state institution. In the meantime, the Board's constitutional powers need to be used to ensure that legislative budgets are followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Public, any other additional public comment in Reno?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks.
Scott here, faculty member of TMCC and also an NFA and Nevada Faculty Alliance member. We've been informed that the state government has made a computational error or accounting error with regard to funding of COLA. And we've been informed further that the system of higher education in Nevada is being expected to make up that shortfall. If that is in fact, I think it needs to be made known that these funds coming from these institutions should not be coming from instruction, nor should they be coming from programs. I think it is important to note that if that happens, students will be impacted. The system of higher education has to come up with these funds. The students will be impacted. And I think my point is, is that the students have the least voice among us, they have the least resources among us, and oftentimes they have the greatest obstacles in front of them as they try to get an education, be contributing members of society. So I would ask that the decision-making entities keep that in mind, that the students really should not be forced to come up with this shortfall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Brian Frost, F R O S T. I'm the faculty senate chair at University of Nevada, incoming council of chairs chair for the faculty senate. I want to thank the Board for considering the proposal to honor the 3% cost of living promised by the governor and approved by the legislature. 3% cost of living was announced for all state workers and it's deserved by all state workers. I know this is not an easy decision because the money will have to come from somewhere, hiring freezes, cuts to operating funds, or student fees, but it really should come from where it was promised, the state. However, let me be clear, regardless of where any internal funds may come from, this is gonna hurt our institutions and our students. COLAs have historically been funded at 8%, and now without warning or discussion, we were funded at 64% at the last minute. Whether new policy or a calculation error is really irrelevant at this point to the faculty and staff across the Nevada system of higher education. Although if it is new policy, it's curious to know discussion of this happened during the legislative session. I strongly encourage the Board and the chancellor to work to repair the apparent rift between the legislature, governor, and the Board. It's important for our institutions, our students in the state, that the state government have frequent, productive, open, and honest communication with ENSI. Nevada system of higher education is a major driving force for state growth, and that's a message that really needs to be shouted from the mountains, mountain tops and skyscrapers across our state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Professor.
Good morning, I'm Donna Haly, H A L Y, representing the Staff Employees Council from UNR. I'd like to share a resolution crafted by the Staff Employees Council. Representing all university classified staff, we respectfully request that ENSI leadership continue to work with the state legislative and executive branches to find a way to fully fund the legislatively approved 3% COLA for all ENSI employees without creating an unfunded liability for ENSI campuses. According to the United States Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics, the cost of living in Nevada has increased 2.9% over the past year, and prices have increased 1.5% over just the past month. With Nevada's rapid pace of economic growth, that rate of cost of living expense is likely to be a trend continuing into the future. At our current rates of pay, the majority, the majority of the state and Nevada workforce will struggle to keep up with their everyday expenses such as food, housing, childcare, medical expenses, and transportation. As requested in Governor Sicilac's budget, the Nevada State Legislature voted in favor of a 3% COLA for all state employees. And to the contrary, the legislature underfunded ENSI state employee COLA at only 2.4%. The UNR Staff Employees Council finds this to be both inequitable and unacceptable treatment of all ENSI state employees, including both professional and classified staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. No more public comment in Reno? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll go to public comment in Las Vegas.
Doug Unger, soon to be post-chair, Council of Faculty Senate Chairs, Nevada System of Higher Education, for the record. Speaking to the chancellor's recommendations for action on the cost of living adjustment for classified and professional employees, my sense of our faculty is that we very strongly support the allocation of the 3% adjustment as directed by our 80th legislature in the passage of A B 542. We also wish to register our deep disappointment that the error by the governor's finance office in allocating only 64% of the funding needed to cover these adjustments is recommended to be passed down to our institutions in what amounts to a 6.4 million cut to base budget system-wide, possibly causing permanent shortfalls into the future if uncorrected. This will without doubt negatively affect hiring and operations to meet student needs, or it will take from student tuition and fees in ways never planned for or envisioned. We urge this Board to do all it can, to use all the influence it possesses, political and personal, to speak out against this unprecedented underfunding ever becoming set policy. We ask you to keep petitioning the governor and legislature to seek other solutions. Really, this whole sad mistake and its consequences feels to me like a famous character in Voltaire, the old lady, who tells a story of being held captive during a siege in the Sea of Azov. All in the Seraglio must suffer body parts cut off to keep their captors alive. This uncorrected error will now force our institutions to cannibalize the funding that most directly affects our faculty and students. It's bad policy. We request of this Board to approve the 3% adjustment, and then do all you can, and all we can do together, to help the public, our legislators, and the governor understand why careless accounting should never become permanent policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Unger. Is it nice to say "pass," Chair?
Not yet.
I know, believe me.
Good morning. My name is Janice McKay, M C K A Y. I am the new chair of the UNLV Faculty Senate and a professor in the School of Music. On behalf of the academic and administrative faculty, I would like to thank the chancellor and the Board of Regents for investigating strategies to alleviate the funding shortfall that impacts our cost of living adjustment. We are very appreciative of the time and effort already spent by the chancellor and ENSI staff to resolve this issue, both when the shortfall was discovered and since the legislative session ended. Faculty at ENSI institutions have felt demoralized by both the failure of Senate Bill 214 and by the last-minute and unexpected hit to our COLA. Regardless of how these issues came about, they have created a perception of state indifference towards higher education in general, faculty and research in particular. For both UNLV and UNR, the recent achievement of reaching R1 status was very uplifting, generating positive feelings and forward momentum in both institutions and in our communities. We would hate to see this progress derailed. We will continue to work closely with ENSI and the Board of Regents towards sustainable solutions for faculty compensation, as well as towards the successful promotion of higher education going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Okay. Seeing no other public comment? Okay, we do?
Good morning. My name's Adrian Havas, H A V A S. I'm a professor of English at CSN, North Las Vegas. I'm also president-elect of the Nevada Faculty Alliance, representing more than 550 faculty across the state. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and we also thank you for hopefully covering the shortfall in COLA funding. As a colleague of mine from NFA noted recently, the long-term precedent that the state does not need to fund cost of living adjustments for ENSI faculty and staff is very dangerous, and I'm sure you recognize this. This last-minute news that just 64% of the 80% usually funded was completely unacceptable and completely blindsided us, and we are today trying to address this together, hopefully. I would suggest that ENSI, for its part, dig into its own, not insubstantial, reserves for the $6.4 million, rather than give an excuse to the various institutions it serves to harm instructional budgets or raise student fees to find this money. And by the way, if you don't believe ENSI and the various institutions have enough reserves, that will be made quite apparent when fact-finding begins at CSN next month in hopes of resolving our more than two-year impasse in collective bargaining process. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Professor. Okay. Seeing no additional public comment, we're gonna close public comment and go to agenda item number two, cost of living adjustment for ENSI classified and professional employees. Chancellor Riley.
Thank you, Chair Page and members of the Board of Regents. Just as an overview, the Nevada Legislature has traditionally appropriated to the Board of Examiners 80% of the funds necessary to effectuate a cost of living or COLA adjustment for classified and professional employees of ENSI. Assembly Bill 542 was passed on the last day of the 2019 Nevada Legislative Session and appropriated approximately 64% of the funds necessary to effectuate a 3% COLA for ENSI classified and professional employees beginning July 1, 2019, which is approximately 16% less than the 80% funded we anticipated. Accordingly, fully funding a 3% COLA for ENSI classified and professional employees will create an anticipated budget shortfall of approximately 6.4 million over the next biennium. For the Board's consideration, and after internally considering all available options, the Office of the Chancellor recommends a 3% COLA be effectuated for all eligible ENSI classified and professional employees beginning July 1, 2019. The Office of the Chancellor further recommends that the presidents of the eight ENSI institutions, as well as ENSI system administration, be directed to work with faculty, as well as all other stakeholders of their respective institutions, on how to bridge the fiscal shortfall between the funds appropriated by A B 542 for the 3% COLA and the amount actually needed by the Board of Regents to fund a 3% COLA. The shortfall is anticipated to cumulatively amount to approximately 0.6% of the 3% COLA across ENSI, or as previously mentioned, approximately 6.4 million over the biennium. Each president, as well as the chancellor, shall present to the Board a plan by the December 2019 Board of Regents' quarterly meeting. The plan could include, but are not limited, to hiring freezes as necessary, operating budget reductions, reallocation of student fee revenue, or a combination of some or all of the cost-saving measures. These recommendations are intended to give the presidents flexibility on how to bridge the shortfall according to the budgets and immediate needs of their respective institutions. The chancellor and his full cabinet are 100% committed to working with and supporting each president and the ENSI institutions throughout this process. Chair Page and any members of the Board, happy to answer any questions. We also have our General Counsel and our CFO if there's any additional questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Regent Trechak.
Thank you, Chair Page. What I'd like to do first is I'd like to read from a couple statutes that not just guide us, but dictate any decisions that we might make today. I first read from NRS 353-260, spending in excess of amount appropriated prohibited, claim void penalties. Section 1, it is unlawful for any state officer, commissioner, head of any state department, or other employee, whether elected or appointed, to expend more money than the sum specifically appropriated by law for any such office, commission, or department. I move down then to section 4 of that statute. Every officer of the state of Nevada, elective or appointive, who violates any of the provisions of this section, shall be guilty of malfeasance in office. I then move down to section 390, excuse me, 396.280, the chapter governing higher ed in the state. It says, "The Board of Regents shall have the power to fix the salaries of academic staff within the system." There's no corresponding section that governs the Regents' authority to fix salaries for anything other than academic staff. It's my opinion in reading this statute, opinion that I strongly hold, that we do not have the power, and in fact, it would be unlawful for us as a Board to authorize a pay raise in excess of the money that was allocated by this law, which is A B 542. I'm certainly very concerned about the COLA shortfall as a result of A B 542, but my concern is, is that we cannot as a Board be granting raises in violation of the statute. The statute's so clear, not only is it a crime, but it is considered to be malfeasance in office. I think clearly the 2.4% COLA raise is authorized by the statute, and I don't think it needs this Board's approval to go forward. I'm sympathetic with the position taken by the chancellor and by others that we direct our presidents to come back to us with a plan of how to fund the balance of this 3% COLA raise. My concern is, is I don't know that we have the authority to do that. We do have the authority under 353-268 to go back to the legislature because of this shortfall, go back to the State Board of Examiners. There is a provision in 268 subsection 1 that would allow this. There's a problem when you look at 353-269, it says there shall be no allocation from the contingency account to affect salary increases for state officers and employees. And so I feel constrained as what we're able to do, and I think we have to be very careful on how we proceed going forward. I'm not prepared at this time, Mr. Chairman, to make a motion. I'd like to hear from my colleagues on the Board before we make any motions, but I just, I would encourage everybody to read that first statute that I read that prohibits any state officer, which would include the 13 of us, from spending money that wasn't authorized by the state legislature. In 1992, in January of 1992, in the Danes case, the Nevada Supreme Court specifically addressed this issue, and it said, "Just as the no-state agency is allowed to spend less than what was allocated by the legislature," in that case it was a 4% COLA, "they're also not allowed to spend more than was allocated by the legislature." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Geddes.
Thank you. And I duly respect Regent Trechak's interpretation of the law and what's put in there, but I think if you read that law in the context of A B 541, the money has not been appropriated to us yet. It says to, in every other section of 541, it says to effect a 3% raise for people within each one of those various agencies, and within that, there are dollar amounts for each agency, but the money is given to the Board of Examiners for us to go back and ask for those funds at the end of the year based on actual expenditures. So I agree with him that the dollar amounts in there came in short, but what the bill actually gave every agency was money to effect a 3% raise, but the money's at the Board of Examiners, and I don't think we hit the point of malfeasance of office directing the presidents to go to 3% today until we went to the Board of Examiners and didn't have those funds. So I think, I would look at it more as a technical correction that we can find those other funds, but the entire intent of the bill and the law they just passed through the legislature and the governor was to effect a 3%. So I would support the governor, or the chancellor's recommendation.
Okay. Regent Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd love to hear from counsel as to their legal opinion on this, and you know, as much as we all want to fund this at 3%, I may, depending on what counsel says, have to vote no until he can provide a written legal analysis of that for us to analyze, but I'd love to hear what he has to say. Thank you.
General Counsel Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman Page, Joe Reynolds, for the record. We have been taking a look at the pertinent statutes that Regent Trechak has mentioned, and notwithstanding how much I very much respect Regent Trechak's opinion, I do disagree with it. Looking at the plain language of NRS 353.260 subsection 1, I would note that it does state with respect to the prohibition of a state officer or commissioner expending more money than is specifically appropriated. That provision, that plain language says the sum specifically appropriated by law for any such office. And in looking at that language, I would interpret that in the aggregate of the money fully appropriated to the Board of Regents and ENSI by the state legislature. Also in looking at that, I would question the full applicability of that provision, also in the context of approximately 1/3 of our funding comes from student fees and other sources outside of traditional appropriations by the legislature, by our very operation. I think to advance a very narrow construction of that provision would effectually mean that the Board of Regents and other state agencies would be violating that law in the way that the traditional COLA funding has always been handled. As mentioned earlier, it's been funded at an 80% rate, and it's always been expected by the Nevada State Legislature in our understanding that the state entities are to find that additional 20% to meet that full COLA funding. And so that, in our circumstance now, it happens to be less than that traditional 80% at 64%. And so it's my opinion that the Board of Regents would not be in violation of this statutory provision if it were to adopt the motion suggested by Chancellor Riley, in effect directing the presidents of the institutions to work with their stakeholders in finding means within the money that they have been provided to come up with that additional 0.6%.
May I ask a follow-up?
Sure. Regent Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things on that. One, I always understood that the 80% funding was not for the agencies to make up the difference to 100%, it was because of expected attrition and vacancies in jobs, and so that 100% is rarely ever needed. And second, so if the, your analysis is that 1/3 of our money comes from students, what about agencies that are 100% fully funded by user fee, you know, like the Nevada Transportation Authority or others that are funded by the entities they regulate, would they be totally free of any restraint required by the legislature on spending, since the legislature doesn't actually give them the money?
General Counsel Reynolds.
And CFO Klinger might be able to add a little bit to this. And I think that goes to my point why I don't think this specific statutory prohibition would apply. I read this in its context essentially as a debt prohibition, that a state entity or state agency cannot go into debt beyond their allowed budget. And that's what the legislature through this prohibition was attempting to avoid. Again, I think interpreting it, as Regent Trechak may suggest, would mean that the very premise of A B 542 violated state law. And I would note that the legislature specifically in A B 542 intended for 3% cost of living to be effectuated by ENSI and other state agencies. They appropriated a portion of the money to make that happen with the expectation that whether it's through other savings in employment or other type of budget reductions... whether it's through other savings in employment or other type of budget reductions, that we'd be able to make up the difference. In conversations with the governor's finance office, they have also confirmed that that is the intent, as well as with staff of Legislative Council Bureau, that that is their intent.
CFO Klinger?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Regent Hayes?
Yeah. I'm just still not comfortable. I'm gonna have to vote no on this, as much as I want to give the reasons. I would, if possible, if this does not pass, if we could get opinions from LCB, from the governor's office, and a written analysis from our own counsel that we can look at before making this decision, but I am not comfortable potentially violating the law, no matter how much I want to give these reasons. So I'm gonna have to be a no, unfortunately.
Okay. CFO Klinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Andrew Klinger, Chief Financial Officer. And maybe to Regent Hayes' question earlier, or his comment about the salary adjustment account, and he is correct, the salary adjustment account that resides at the Board of Examiners has historically been funded at 80%, because there's a recognition that there's going to be vacancies in some agencies and others are loans. Cumulatively, they funded 80%. To his question, though, about agencies that are not funded with state general fund, I think it's important to understand, so what we're talking about is AB 542, which would be referred to as the Pay Bill, typically when you're talking about the different appropriations. AB 543, which is the Appropriations Bill, that's the main appropriations bill, and so when you look at that, that's the bill that funds state agencies that are funded with general fund. In addition to that, there is SB 553, which is called the Authorizations Bill, and what that does is it authorizes agencies that don't receive general funds to spend the fees that they collect. So obviously, not being an attorney, when you look at this question, I think you have to look at all of those bills together, and how the agency is funded in its entirety. And for the Nevada System of Higher Education, when you look at all of our appropriations, for the first year, it's $697 million, and in the second year, it's $707 million. And so typically, the routine, when you go to the Board of Examiners to ask for that salary adjustment funding, it's late in the fiscal year. So for fiscal year '20, that wouldn't happen until April of fiscal year '20. So April of next year is when we'd be going and asking for those funds. So certainly not a legal interpretation, but just a fiscal interpretation. If you're looking at whether or not the system is going to run into a deficit, that wouldn't actually happen until the final quarter of fiscal year '20, just from a timing standpoint.
Vice Che Guevara?
Regent Guevara here. Well, I just wanted to come back on that point. And again, I understand Regent Trechak's interpretation, but to Regent Hayes' comment that voting for that today would be violating the law, I disagree. And as I stated earlier, this money has been appropriated to the Board of Examiners to cover the funding. They did not put enough in there in the bill there, and we have to figure out a way to work it to the dollar amounts that CFO Klinger said. But when you look at it, the bill said to effect a 3% pay increase to the employees of the Nevada System of Higher Education. That was a directive from the legislature for us to do the 3%. How we cover it and addressing this issue there, I don't think triggers any sort of violation of the law until we went to the Board of Examiners and said what's there. And although they historically do 80%, and that's what they've done for several sessions, some years it's 75%, some years it's 84%, and we go in April, as CFO Klinger said, and ask for what it actually was, and then we make our case there. And I think, up until that point, there wouldn't be no violation of this statute if we were able to work out how it was covered. So I would support, once again, the chancellor's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Regent Trechak.
If that's the case, then we don't need to do anything. We just wait till April, till we go back to the Board of Examiners and make the request. I think that the, just because the language of the law, and the law in this case is 542, it's not 541 and 542 and 543, it's 542. And the, if the legislature were to direct the system and every other agency to pay a 5% or a 10% COLA raise, but gave funding sufficient only for 2.4%, I don't think that the agencies would be required to make those raises without the appropriate funding allocation. And so if we follow the logic that the General Counsel and the Vice Chair just presented, we don't need to do anything right now. Let's just wait till April, we go to the Board of Examiners, make the request, and see how much they give us.
I think we have to do announce the presidents know what to do, and I think the presidents need to know that they're given a 3% July 1.
Question for CFO Klinger. Historically, what has the funding been?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I look back all the way to 2005, and in that analysis, it's always been funded at 80%. And I was directly involved in budgets prior to that, and my recollection is that they've been funded at 80%, that we've been funded at 80% for at least 20 years, would be my estimate.
And do you happen to know if any other state agency has been funded below that 80% threshold?
So what they do, and what the governor's finance office and the legislative fiscal staff are saying now, is that because we are funded one-third with student fee and two-thirds with general fund, that they've adjusted that calculation to reflect that, which is what they do with other agencies. If you have an agency, another state agency, that is funded 50% with state general fund and 50% with other funds, what they will typically fund for that agency is 80% of that 50%. In other words, they don't give you the cost-of-living adjustment funds for the entire agency if you're only funded 50%. Now, historically, that has not been how they've treated higher ed. Historically, they have funded us at 80%, and I would argue that when they adopted the new funding formula, for example, there was a policy in there that was adopted by the 2013 legislature that stated that they would not offset student fee increases, they wouldn't reduce general fund. This isn't exactly the same, but it's certainly related, in my mind, in that they've offset some general funds here. So it's not how they've funded us typically, but in talking to the fiscal staff from both governor's office and the legislature, what they are now saying is that they're treating us like other agencies, which I understand their logic there. Don't agree with it, but understand it.
Regent McAdoo?
Thank you, Chair Page. So in just trying to wrap my head around all of this, if we were to take no action today, leaving the 2.4% that's been approved for classified and professional staff, what are our options in the days to come to acquire and then award the balance to both classified and faculty? I guess that's probably a question for General Counsel and CFO Klinger, whoever knows the answer. Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Andrew Klinger. In looking at this, and Joe will have to answer the question on the legality of interim finance, because that was our first thought, is in between legislative sessions, they allocate funds to what they call an interim finance committee contingency fund, and it's for situations, in my mind, like this, where an error has been made, or there's some unexpected expenditures. And so that's typically the first place you would go, but I think there's a different legal analysis in that regard. Without those funds available, and I think as the chancellor's recommendation stated, the presidents would have to look at either hiring freezes, cost-cutting measures, or a reallocation of student fees. I think, as all the regents know, there's a fee distribution that happens when a student pays a fee. Part of it goes to the state operating budget, part of it goes to general improvement, part of it goes to capital improvement. There's various categories of where those funding, how that funding is allocated. And so I think what the chancellor is recommending is that they have some flexibility to reallocate those funds to cover the difference, in addition to the other cost-cutting measures.
And this is Joe Reynolds, to add on what CFO Klinger was stating. I mean, normally, the purpose of the interim finance committee is to allow a funding mechanism in between our state's legislative sessions for state entities to request additional funding to meet expenditures and needs while the legislature is out of session. The difficulty with going to the IFC in this case, as Regent Trechak mentioned earlier, is in NRS 353-269 subsection 2, which states that no allocation from the contingency account may be made by the interim finance committee to affect salary increases for state officers and employees. There's an exception in there, but I don't believe that that exception applies. Now, there is different ways to make legal arguments that the term salary increases, you know, may not squarely apply to a COLA cost-of-living adjustment. At least, it's my understanding that the Legislative Council Bureau may take the position that this would preclude going back to the IFC as a funding option for the board, and I do believe it would be a very difficult legal position for the board to take, that this wouldn't apply to the COLAs. Taking a step back, also, I think Regent McAdoo, with respect to your question, I do believe, incorporated in the chancellor's recommendation to the board, in the way that that is structured, that it would not trigger the concerns expressed by Regent Trechak. Again, that if the board awards the 2.4% that was specifically appropriated in section 7 of AB 542, and then this board directs the presidents of the institutions to work with their leadership, with their faculty, with their students, on what may fit the needs and the abilities of each institution to come up with that additional 0.6%, that is consistent with the intent of AB 542, that the legislature by law authorized the Board of Regents to give this 3% raise. It says specifically in that statute. So for the board to do that, it's my opinion that that's not contrary to law, but actually, it would be giving effect to the intent of the legislature by law.
General Counsel Reynolds, so is your opinion that we can go back to IFC, or we cannot?
We can always make the request. It's my opinion that it will not have success, in that, on the plain language of that statute that I cited, that the IFC is very unlikely to agendize that or entertain that.
Chancellor Riley?
Thank you, Chair Page. Just furthering what General Counsel Reynolds has said, I think the recommendation incorporates a concern of this board. We're asking that my office, as well as each of the institutions, come back by December to ensure that we will not be in a position, by the end of the fiscal year, that we are in debt. We do not claim our dollars until the last quarter. For example, for FY '19, we're just now going to the Board of Examiners for last year's money. Further, this would put every single state agency in a position of violating the law, and that doesn't seem to make sense. I mean, we, I think we will ensure this board, by December, that we have worked with our faculty, and in part of this recommendation, as part of shared governance, is we go back to our institutions, and we work with the faculty and others about how we're gonna do this, what's best for our institutions. I can assure the board, we will come back in December with these recommendations. And the time that we're submitting this, we will not be in any violation, we will not be in debt in any sense of the word.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of the General Counsel.
Sure. Regent Trechak?
Mr. Reynolds, what is the authority that the boards would have under chapter 396 to authorize a pay raise for classified staff? I understand that for academic staff, we have the specific authority under 396-280. What is the authority to, for this board, to grant a pay raise for classified staff?
Thank you, Regent Trechak. I'd first go to AB 542 in and of itself, that that is a new law that grants the authority to this board. And if you go back to the 1992 State Employees Association versus Danes case, the Nevada Supreme Court said, in looking at a salary increase issue in front of the Board of Examiners, the proper place for the analysis is to look at the enabling legislation itself. So I'd first start in answering that question by looking at AB 42, and that that authority is given to the board expressly by the legislature in what they passed two weeks ago. I would then jump to NRS 396.370 subsection 2, which specifically grants the Board of Regents that the state maintenance and support of the system is granted to the Board of Regents in that in NRS 396.380, that says the members of the Board of Regents are the sole trustees to receive and disperse all monies of the system. It says that in subsection 1. And I would then even actually jump a little bit deeper into the Nevada Constitution itself, into Article 2, Section 6, which discusses the support of university and common schools by direct legislative appropriation, and that in subsection 1 of that, it says, "In addition to other means provided for the support and maintenance of said universities." In looking at those cumulatively, you know, it's my analysis that the board does have the authority constitutionally in NRS Chapter 396, as well as in AB 542, to direct the institutions to find those monies to come up with that additional 0.6% shortfall that we're looking at.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to figure out what to call you, so.
Chris Hevy, for the record, representing President Miano for UNLV, and I would just like to say that I think we all recognize that our faculty and staff are the primary way that we fulfill our mission to our students and to our community, and certainly, we would like to see the board honor that commitment by reinforcing the intent to meet the 3% COLA adjustment today. We know that it's been a disappointing session for the faculty and staff, who had many other goals in terms of salary, trying to keep up better with inflation, and so we'd like to end today, at least, with a positive message of certainty that we can go forward and honor that raise. And as an institution, we've already begun our internal discussions about how we will meet that, if necessary, internally, though we know that will be a heavy lift, and I know, you know, the other institutions will probably are committed as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Vice Che Guevara?
I would like to move the chancellor's recommendation to direct the presidents to appropriate a 3% cost-of-living adjustment to all the faculty and classified staff in the system, with the 2.4% in the appropriations bill, and working with the options outlined to, for the presidents to come back and explain how we'll cover the 0.6%.
I'll second the motion made by Vice Chair. Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Che Guevara, second by Regent Moran. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Regent Perkins?
Just a comment. I would hope that this would not just be balanced on the backs of the students, like that should be the last option that we look at, is taking from student fees to appropriate this, so I would appreciate that would be a consideration.
Chief of Staff Gould, can you repeat the motion?
Well, I will try.
Well, that's why, I just want to make sure we get it 100% correct.
I mean, essentially, what I heard was Vice Chair Guevara's moving to adopt the chancellor's recommendation, as stated by the chancellor, that the presidents would come back, although I did not hear a time, but I guess as the new chair, he can set the time, to work out the options for funding the shortfall. That's how I understood it. That's how I understood it. Now, you know, that's a summary, but we can certainly go back and look at, and what I would do in the minutes, is look at the Chancellor's recommendation.
Sure. I just want to make sure that we're clear. Vice Chair Geddes, are you saying approve the 2.4% with the 0.6% for the presidents to come back with their plan?
I'm saying a 3% effective July 1, as 542 directed us to do, so that everybody would get a 3% July 1. We know the 2.4% is there, and the presidents would come back to cover the 0.6% before we have to go to Examiners and IFC to cover our funds for the year.
And your intention is to bring up, they have to come back by when? Are you setting their limit?
The Chancellor said December, and I'm fine with that. I would also be fine with March, since we don't go in until April.
So for your vote?
I will defer to you.
Okay. I would say December, and Regent Moran as a second of that, are you good with adding December?
I am good with the amendment, Mr. Chairman.
I think that's how the Chancellor stated it, Mr. Chair. Was bringing it back by December, so that's fine.
Okay, perfect. Yes, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure, Regent McAdoo.
So will you please reread the motion exactly as I will be voting on it? Chief of Staff Gould.
Okay, so we're going to do a two-part, we're going to go to Chancellor Riley to hear, read his part.
Because we have the Chancellors and we have Chair, Vice Chair Geddes, so I don't really know which it is.
I believe that, if I could, this is Tom Riley for the record, I believe that Vice Chair Geddes was recommending we adopt the recommendation that our office has made. And I can read that. So the Office of the Chancellor recommends, first of all, as it would be internally considered all options, the Office of the Chancellor recommends that a 3% COLA be effectuated for all eligible ENCHY classified and professional employees beginning July 1. The Office of the Chancellor further recommends that the presidents of the eight institutions, as well as ENCHY system administration, be directed to work with faculty and all stakeholders at their respective institutions on how to bridge the fiscal shortfall between the funds appropriate by AB 54 for the 3% COLA and for the amount actually needed for the Board of Regents to fund the 3%. This shortfall is anticipated to cumulatively amount to approximately 0.6% of the 3% COLA, or as previously mentioned, approximately 6.4 million. Each president, as well as the Chancellor, shall present to the board a plan by December 2019 Board of Regents quarterly meeting. The plan could include, but not limited to, hiring freezes as necessary, operating budget reductions, reallocation of student fee revenue, or a combination of some or all of the cost savings measures. The recommendation is intended to give the presidents some flexibility on how to bridge the shortfall according to the budgets and immediate needs of their respective institutions.
Okay. That is the motion.
I have one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Regent Trachak.
I'm always leery of spending money I don't have. I know that's in favor right now. My concern here is that the legislature has allocated the funds for a 2.4% raise. And so I agree wholeheartedly with that proposal. I don't think we need a action by the board to effectuate that. But my concern is, is that then we've also committed to the 6 tenths of a percent of the COLA raise that could range from anything, from hiring freezes all the way to reallocation of student fees. And I don't think that that is the precedent that we want to set as a board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. We're going to do a roll call vote.
Regent Carter?
No.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
No.
All right, that was a no. Okay. Regent Carvallo?
Yes.
Regent Del Carlo?
Yes.
Regent Dubravich absent, I believe, yes. Vice Chair Geddes?
Aye.
Regent Hayes?
Nay.
Regent Lieberman?
Yes.
Regent McAdoo?
No.
Regent McMichael?
Yes.
Regent Moran?
Yes, sir.
Chair Page?
No.
Regent Perkins?
Yes.
Regent Trachak?
No.
Motion passes. Seven votes.
Great. With that, we're going to item number three, new business. CNN, we're going to go to item number four, public comment in Elko.
No public comment from Elko.
Reno.
No public comment in Reno, Mr. Chair.
And Las Vegas.
Gregory Brown, Professor of History at UNLV. And although this is sort of after the fact, I want to just add a few points, which I hope are all obvious, but I certainly feel compelled to share. Number one, this should be considered a very embarrassing situation for this state, for our system, and for this board. Those of us who are spending our time teaching and researching rely upon you to basically build budgets and operate. And on the one hand, we know only from press, from emails, from colleagues, from rumors what's going on. We, like you, have personal budgets to build. We, like you, have plans we need to make. We need to know what we're expecting to get paid. Number two, this is also really speaking to what seems to someone who used to be deeply involved in these processes and is now an outsider, a challenge that I would suggest this board really needs to take up. You spent a lot of time lobbying on a point on which I have no personal opinion, that you are an autonomous branch of the state government. At the same time, the Chancellor has emphasized his close working relationship with the governor. But it's not working. I mean, the governor's not here, the legislature's not here. This is a collective problem, and yet there is simply no adult supervision of a portion of the budget that amounts to $6 million. Thirdly, we knew going in that the cost of living should have been a higher priority than it was. Bureau Labor Statistics tells us that over the last 24 months, it's been a 4.7% increase in cost of living nationally. I don't know regionally, but you know that even a 3% raise is actually economically inadequate. And finally, I would like to add a point that some of you may recall, who've been on this board many years, that there was a former regent who used to ask a question on every financial allocation question. And the question was not, shall we spend the money? The question is, what are we not going to be able to do with that money? What are we going to have to cut from to make this allocation? That regent was Steve Sisalak. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Professor Brown. With that, we're going to close public comment, and this meeting is adjourned. Do business. Yep, yep. Meeting still stays adjourned. [laughing]